Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joel. Last time, Vice Mayor Joel.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Bloom.
Here.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Dr. Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Stern. Mr. Wasson.
Here.
And Mr. Myers. You have a quorum.
Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay. Just for your information on the large screen over there, if the meeting runs late, we've arranged for a split screen. It'll be the Heat on one side and the Panthers on the other. So do not worry. Do not fret. But maybe we can finish before. We're already up to item three. Announcement of Vice Mayor. I guess I can announce that pursuant to a resolution, that would be 2022-70, Commissioner Amit Bloom will serve as Vice Mayor for the next six months. Let me just say, Commissioner Joel, wow, you set a high bar for this administration as Vice Mayor. And Vice Mayor Bloom, you've had six months to watch, so I'm sure you'll do a fabulous job.
Thank you, I'm ready.
Okay. Number four, any deletions or additions to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so let's move on to special presentations. We have a couple of proclamations. I'm not going to read through them. We're not presenting them to anyone, but I do want everyone to know that I have declared April 30th to May 6th to be Municipal Clerks Week. And we're very, very fortunate that we all feel up here, we have the best, the best in the business. So Lisa, thank you very much and enjoy your week.
Thank you.
Also, very near and dear to my heart and many of us, I'm also proclaiming this month, the month of May in Aventura, although worldwide, Jewish-American Heritage Month. So that's really wonderful and we can applaud that as well. We have another proclamation that the manager will handle. But at this time, we're going to do a special recognition. I'm going to ask my commissioners to present certificates down there to the newest members, the newly constituted Community Services Advisory Board. And while they're heading down there, I'll just mention, I believe there are two members who were not able to be in attendance tonight. Jesse Potek is a new member, there's his certificate. And Bruce Davidson, not able to be here tonight, there's his certificate. Congratulations to them. They worked on this all week. Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you for the next one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Mr. Robert McFarland from the American Public Works Association to do a special presentation to our Public Works Department.
At my age, I'm in between glasses, so I need to switch my readers on. Good evening, Mayor, newly Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents of Aventura. For the record, my name is Robert Garland. I am the past president of the Florida Chapter of the American Public Works Association, or APWA, and currently a member of the National Board of Directors, representing members from Region Four, which includes Florida. It's my privilege and honor to recognize accomplishments of your Department of Public Works and Transportation in receiving their APWA re-accreditation. I'd also like to thank you, members of the Commission, for your support in the accreditation and re-accreditation process. It demonstrates your commitment to the city staff in advancing their careers and your commitment to the residents of the city for providing higher levels of service while trying to maintain affordable rate structures. Accreditation is an achievement that recognizes the commitment of the city and the department to provide continuous improvements in the services they provide to the residents and taxpayers that they serve. Achieving accreditation and re-accreditation documents that your policies and procedures, those of your department, align with internationally recognized best practices. And the benefits to the city include increased efficiency, improved processes, succession planning, which I could personally use some better succession plan in my job right now, and customer satisfaction. The process is a rigorous process that includes an evaluation of your department's existing policies and procedures, compares them, as I say, against internationally best practices. It includes a peer review of a third-party APWA agency or another accredited agency to come in and take an outsider's third-party look at your policies and procedures. The department received our initial accreditation, I believe, in December 2018, after about a year or two-year-long process where the agencies reviewed your procedures and they were revised to meet international best practices. Then the department applied for re-accreditation in 2022. It's required every four years. And in February of 2023, a team of evaluators from the states of Washington and Missouri traveled here and reviewed about 90, I think it was 94 of your current practices. And they recognized compliance, 100% compliance with all your practices from the initial accreditation. And as a result, granted re-accreditation to your department. Now, as your staff would agree, I think Alan Levine, Gail Fishman, and I guess even Joe Crowe, who's got the wrong shirt on today, it says Hollywood on it, would agree it's not an easy process, but the benefits are truly worth the process to get there. So on behalf of the American Public Works Association, I'm proud to recognize the accomplishments of the city and the Department of Public Works and Transportation for your re-accreditation. This milestone places you as one of under 192 agencies throughout North America that have achieved this. I believe, when I heard earlier, that the city was 152 or 153, 152? So there's only been, you know, 40 agencies that have achieved this since your initial accreditation. So kudos on your staff, on the Commission, and congratulations on a well job done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a small token of appreciation.
Alan, Anthony, Gail, and Joseph.
This is heavy, I need help.
Thank you.
And Frank.
The mayor has also proclaimed has a proclamation for the Public Works Department. Alan, you don't have to sneak away. And I'm going to read it fast, but I think it's important. "Whereas the public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability, resilient communities, and to public health, high quality of life and well-being for all Aventura residents, businesses, and tourists alike. Whereas in the public interest for the citizenry of the city of Aventura, to gain the knowledge and to maintain the ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs within our community. Whereas this year's theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works, illustrates how public works connects us through all infrastructure and services, enhancing the quality of life for the communities as the professionals they serve. And is therefore resolved that Mayor Weinberg, as Mayor on behalf of the City Commission and of the city of Aventura, proclaim May 21st to the 27th of 2023 is National Public Works Week."
One more second.
Joe, come here for a minute. You know, you just heard a lot of great things about public works and everything they do and re-accreditation. I can tell you it is an unbelievable task to know that there are 94 separate procedures and policies that have to be documented and followed up with and continue to be done on a regular basis is an amazing fact. Of the thousands of cities in this country to have only now 190, but at that time, 152 to have been accredited, and I have to tell you, the hardest thing about accreditation is being re-accredited. It's very difficult, not many make it through the second time around. And from the feedback from all the people that came in from the evaluators, it was just amazing to have that much positive praise heaped on the entire department. And that doesn't happen by mistake. It happens because people care and you have a great leader who flat-left us. But anyway, I really did want to take a second to really recognize Joe. He's been here since 2016. And if you heard, 2018 is when we got accredited. So it was something that really was important to him and he took the whole department with him. And it was one of the first things that I dealt with when I became the manager here back then. So Joe, in appreciation for your loyal and dedicated years of service with Aventura, you have been a leader and a contributor to why Aventura is recognized as a city of excellence. We wish you continued success in all your future endeavors, wherever your life may take you, your friends in Aventura.
I don't do that very well, but thank you for this. I'm shocked. I didn't expect it. My time here was, you know, I enjoyed my time here. I enjoyed everything that we did, great staff. We have a new director that's coming in who's very capable and I'm sure he's going to do fine with your support. And and just thanks.
Well, I'm not going to ask the person I'm about to introduce to speak, but Jake Ozziman is our new Public Works Director. He's joining us from Key Biscayne and he's one of the most highly regarded Public Works Directors in Dade County. And we were very fortunate that he decided to pull up his roots from Key Biscayne and join us here in Aventura. And we're looking forward to really working with him and he's going to do a great job. But, okay.
Thank you for that presentation and thank you, Public Works, for the hard work and the great job that you do. Everyone be careful because, at least as I recall, as a younger man, National Public Works Week was always one of the craziest weeks. I mean, it was spring break and National Public Works Week, so be careful out there.
Mayor, this is the last presentation, I promise. I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking tonight. I'd invite Crystal Melendez from our Community Services Department to come down. If you've been to our parks in Aventura, you've met Crystal. By all accounts, this is a service award of 10 years that Crystal's been with us, but she's kind of still a rookie at 10 years around here. We usually, 20 years, most people are around here. But she started off as a part-timer and slowly worked her way up. And now she's the Assistant Parks Director with several others. One thing about Crystal is her incredibly positive attitude and get things done. We put a lot of responsibility on those people in the parks and they deal with everything you can imagine and they do so with really grace. And I very rarely hear any problems from our Parks Department. So I know Crystal's a large part of that. So for your 13 years of service, I'd like to present you this certificate. Just look at the camera.
Thanks.
Commissioner Freeland?
Crystal Melendez, do you want to invite your mom and your beautiful son to come up? Come up for a picture as well? I just want to add something from the personal note. I've had the pleasure of knowing Crystal, working in the park for 10 years while my children were little and she was always there smiling, greeting, and making the park a more beautiful place. And we need more employees like her in the parks.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Okay. This is going to be really cool. If our police chief could come forward, he's going to introduce our police chaplains. Thank you, Chief.
You're thanking me too soon. I haven't, you don't even know what I'm about to say. Good evening. Thank you all for giving us the moment to recognize our chaplaincy program. Just really quickly, there's been an emphasis placed on the well-being of officers, mental health awareness. And we've had a very strong push. It started with my predecessor who worked on our wellness program and really started building it. I picked up the ball and we kept moving it forward. And this is one piece of that overall puzzle to provide all of our employees, not just our officers, but all the employees of the Police Department, the ability to have a good mental health awareness program and a chaplaincy program, a strong chaplaincy program is part of that. So it doesn't matter if your title is Rabbi or if it's Pastor or Imam. It doesn't matter because when you become a chaplain for a police department, that's your title. It's chaplain. And these are people who choose to follow a path in life to help others. Whatever God we follow, or even if we don't, it's always good to have somebody who's willing to listen. And these are people who devoted their lives to listening more than talking and being an ear for you to talk about your problems or your good things. And it's amazing how you think, I don't want to talk to anybody, but slowly but surely, you really do. And, you know, we never really had a true chaplaincy program here at the agency. It's something we've always wanted to do and today is the start of that. So I'm going to give a quick bio. I normally don't write notes for myself, but when it's about somebody else's life and career, I got to read off of what is provided so we don't mess anything up. But I will say, as you can see projected on the wall, are the custom-made badges that we have made for our chaplains, which at this very moment are not in my hands. They're in Port St. Lucie. And we will be getting them. So tonight we have stand-in ones. They will actually have, it says Officer on here, but I will take these back right away. I trust, I trust Omi, the Rabbi, I don't trust so much with a badge. So, but that's what they're going to be pinned with this evening. I will first start with Rabbi Birken's bio. And Rabbi, if you want to step in, Omi, if you want to step up also. Rabbi Jonathan Birken is the spiritual leader of the Aventura Turnberry Jewish Center, a diverse, multi-generational congregation and the second-largest conservative synagogue in the state of Florida, comprised of children and teenagers, young adults and young families, snowbirds, and seniors. The Aventura Turnberry Jewish Center is a proud home of one of the largest groups of Holocaust survivors of any synagogue in the United States. Rabbi Birken actually married my wife and I also. To each other, yes. Rabbi Birken received his rabbinic ordination from the Jewish Theological Seminary in America in 2001, born in Connecticut and raised at the Tree of Life Congregation in Pittsburgh, where his father, who's with us this evening, Rabbi Alvin Birken, served for 23 years. Rabbi Jonathan Birken completed his undergraduate degree in philosophy at Columbia College of Columbia University. Rabbi Birken is a graduate of the Kellogg Management Education of Jewish Leaders at Northwestern University and a senior rabbinic fellow at the Shalom Hartman Institute in Jerusalem. He served as president of the Rabbinical Association of Greater Miami, chairperson of the Synagogues Federation Relations Committee of the Greater Jewish Miami Federation, and chairperson of the International Rabbinical Assembly Convention in Dallas, Texas. He is a member of the Planning and Distribution Committee of the Greater Miami Jewish Federation, the vice president of the Rabbinic Cabinet for Jewish Federations of North America, and a member of the Muslim Jewish Advisory Council of South Florida. He serves on the National Rabbinic Cabinet for Israel Bonds, the National Council for AIPAC, JNF's Rabbis for Israel, and is a chaplain for the Miami Beach Police Department as well. He does answer to a higher authority, she's here tonight. His wife, Lauren Birken, Rabbi Lauren Birken as well, so thank you, and his children. So thank you for coming by and his sister is also with us. I'll be introducing now Omi. It's her first name, Osmyra? Osmyra, we don't say it. She prefers Omi and that's what we all call her, Omi Yanaris. Omi is an October baby born and raised in Miami, specifically South Miami Heights. She's the proud mom of four amazing kids and a dog. And a dog mom to a dog named Radar, a Chihuahua and Drax, an English Bulldog. She is happily married to a sworn officer of 14 years with the Miami-Dade County Police Department, who Tony is her husband, he's right over there. She's on the staff of the nonprofit Caring for Miami as a director of food programs and community relations. Their focus is food insecurity and free access to dental services across Miami-Dade County. She is an ordained, sworn-in police chaplain with the Miami Beach PD and Doral Police Department. Omi is a board member of the Fellowship of Christian Police Officers and is a member of the International Conference of Police Chaplains. And this is a quote from Omi. "Being a chaplain is not something you happen to land on. Being a chaplain is a calling from God himself before the foundations of the earth. He chose her for such a time as this to bring hope and a smile to someone's world turned upside down by tragedy. Becoming a chaplain has been one of her most humbling and honoring callings she's ever had in her life. It is a calling that she will protect and use to bring hope to our officers and the community she serves." So tonight, if you want to invite your significant other to pin the badge on you, please. Who would you like to pin the badge on you? That would be great, okay. Do you want to go to him? Would that be easier and then we'll take pictures? You'll have them from here and Omi? Your hubby, of course. Absolutely, I'm not going to stab you. So we'll do one at a time, I guess.
Commissioner Cruz.
I just want to say I've known Rabbi Birken for, for quite a few years and his beautiful family. I think we've made a great choice. Omi seems also terrific. We are a very diverse caring and inclusive community. And I think that you both reflect those values extremely well. I have no doubt that you will represent us with great dignity and warmth. And I thank you and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you for the service that both of you are going to be providing to the men and women of the Aventura Police Department. We all know if history is a guide, there will be some tough days. And it's, it's comforting to know that the two of you will be there and we greatly appreciate your efforts. Okay, moving on. We're going to have an update from Donsofer Aventura High School. Doctor.
Good evening and thank you again for allowing me to present to you all. I want to thank Rabbi Birken as well. The highlight of our year for the last two years has been the presentation from a survivor featured. And you host us and just make all of our kids feel so welcome as well. So thank you. And what a beautiful family you have. Thank you all. So today's one of those days. We, yesterday, we started our, our testing. I've talked about it a lot. Our students over a six week period will present over ten thousand products. Some of them projects that they have to submit other tests and essays. And we were smoothly cruising through. We're about thirty-three percent complete, no hitches at all. And I sent out an email praising the staff. Say no other school would even attempt this number of tests and this attempt to get all the ace diplomas from Cambridge University and capstone diplomas from college board. And then this morning hit. So it was, it was kind of an epic day. You appreciate your staff a lot when things go smoothly and they succeed. And then we had a day like today where the microphone went out in the gym before we launched the test and gave instructions to our kids. So they grabbed the bullhorn, made it happen. The AC went down in the cafeteria, so the kids came in. It felt like the heater was on. Temperatures were probably pushing into nineties, but they stayed focused. Dress code, they have had a few violations after things got rolling, but they stayed focused, accomplished their purpose in the prep sessions. The students outside, we couldn't get in. They changed the code. We found out from Jamie thankfully what it was to get to the water fountain before anyone died of dehydration. But they had to actually drink out of a faucet. And that was the only thing of all the challenges we had today. The only thing they complained about was that I don't think they realized that that's actually drinkable water that comes out of the faucet. It's, it's not filtered. It's not chilled, but they survived. So great day. And again, no complaints whatsoever. And it brought me back to the experience of COVID and all the changes and challenges our students have faced from the time the school opened with the first graduating class being celebrated May thirtieth. So I thought there's no better way for you to appreciate the fruits of your efforts and creating this amazing school than to meet our valedictorian. Before I have her come up though, I'd like to recognize her parents. Jade's parents, if you'll please stand and be recognized. Thank you. We're so appreciative for, for Jade. And then we have Daisy for the next two years. Then you have your son, I hope is still planning to come, which will be great. So we'll basically have eight years of Steins, which is such a blessing to our entire school community. And here she is. Jade, come on forward. Jade is our first valedictorian for our first graduating class. She's brilliant. She's resourceful. She's kind, multi talented, athletic, you name it. She's wonderful and we're so honored to have you represent our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Can you hear me? Thanks. That was really nice, Doctor McKee. In the seventh grade, I sat down with Aventura's former mayor Weissman for an interview as an inspire, aspiring newspaper columnist in an effort to share histories with other students on community leaders. In those forty-five minutes, we began a relationship where she would take me under her wing for the next six years. As we adjourned our first meeting, she handed me a blueprint for DSAHS, the plans for our city's first ever high school. Today, I'm one of the two hundred seniors who will graduate from DSAHS as Aventura's first. And I'm graduating as valedictorian, a title I've been planning and working towards since my meeting with the mayor when Donsofer Aventura High School was just a few sketches and distant dream. Being a student at Donsofer has been a unique experience where I've been able to pave my own path, pioneering founding clubs such as Mall UN and being able to construct a community garden in our own student parking lot. Chances like these are distinctive to being a part of a founding class, but impossible without the incomparable community of DSAHS. What I will take with me the most for my four years of high school are the relationships I've made being a part of the Donsofer community, navigating the trials and tribulations of being elaborate at a brand new school. My peers, teachers and administrators have taught me more about my own strengths and weaknesses, coupled with interests and passions than I could have ever fathomed. Not only have they pushed me towards finding opportunities such as interning for Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz and becoming head delegate of North America for Mall UN Impact, but in between hallway giggles and collaborative meetings, they have become family. At no other school would I find another Miss Clapier, who personally walked me into CBS in the middle of nowhere in New Haven, Connecticut on the school Ivy League tour to pick up eardrops because I was crying about my swimmer's year. At no other school would I find another Miss Weinberg, who has sat with me and crafted innumerable applications, prepared for interviews and very patiently listened to me rant about anything and everything college. I apologize to her for how many times she's heard me say, I can't write another supplemental essay. I'm going to die. Fifty short answers later, I got into school and everything will be okay, like she said. It was going south for a minute though. At no other school would I be able to personally connect with teachers like Mr. Stein and Mr. Combrink, who have become more than just educators, but role models and mentors for my character. Their determination and resilience is admirable and I am internally grateful for their support and advice. And obviously I need to shout out Doctor McKee for both dealing with me and my mom pestering him about the valedictorian status since the minute of his arrival and being a constant source of integral information and guidance. Forming these connections has been the highlight of my academic career and the driving force for my intrinsic will to succeed as a student. The Aventura community is electric. It is a feeling I can't describe in words, but only through the warm imagery of anecdotes. I cannot thank the city enough for your support. Without your compassion and generosity towards making DSH, DSAHS great, my peers and I of the first graduating class would not be graduating with the same maturity, grit and love for each other that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. And what a marvelous representative of the first ever graduating class. As you said, May thirtieth. Very, very exciting. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any commissioners or the manager need to remove an item? Okay. If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve. Commissioner Bloom. And a second, sorry, Vice Mayor Bloom. Commissioner Joel, second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Joel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bloom?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, no zoning hearings. Number eight. First reading of ordinances. Madam Clerk, can you read this ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty, which ordinance adopted a budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year by revising the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year operating and capital budget as outlined in Exhibit A attached here too, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to carry out the aims of this ordinance and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion approved, please? Commissioner Marks and a second. Commissioner Friedland? Mister Manager, you want to tell us what this is?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year we do two budget amendments, mid-year and end of year. When we do this, we do the to balance our books and to account for revenues or expenses that have come in a little higher or lower than expected and to take care of things that might have occurred that we didn't plan for. One of those examples would be the, the community center roof, which needed, which needs immediate repair. And in this government building, we've had to replace or put on schedule to replace the chillers, which has a long lead time. So those are things we didn't really expect to do. Some of the other things addressed in this mid-year budget amendment is under the Florida law. They ask that we no longer, or it's no longer, building department revenues and expenses are carried under the general operating fund. They need to be segregated out. So cities across the state do not use the building department to fund their operating costs. So in our budget, we're moving several million dollars out of the general fund into a segregated account and all the expenses associated with those things. The good news is our building department is very successful and we're moving towards again, having another record breaking year, well over what we budgeted for on revenues of around three point two million dollars. We're about, we're halfway done and we're close to almost three million dollars now. So the building department is really doing a great job. Another, another fund that we are eliminating is the off duty police officer account where police officers from time to time are asked to do off duty employment by different merchants and such. We're no longer going to carry that as a separate fund. We're just going to roll that into our, our general operating fund. It's a lot easier on the accounting department. And it's in in and out expense. No matter what the expense is, there's an offsetting revenue. So that's basically our, yeah, our budget amendment.
Thank you. Any commission comment or questions? Seeing none, I'll open it to the public. If any members of the public have a comment regarding this item, seeing none, I'll close it and let's vote.
Commissioner Joel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bloom?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, number nine, second reading. Madam Clerk, if you can read this ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending chapter two, administration, article three, advisory boards of the City of Aventura Code of Ordinances to provide more uniformity among advisory board regulations, providing for survivability, providing for inclusion in the code and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve, please? Vice Mayor Bloom. Second. Commissioner Cruz. Mister Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is on second reading. Over the years, the city has created several advisory boards to give advice to the commission. They were created at different times and while the, the rules of appointment and how we, people come on the board are very similar, this ordinance is really to make it more uniform and more consistent. So being appointed and being interviewed and being recommended and approved by the commission is pretty much the same. So it makes it a little easier for the people applying and also for the staff and the commission.
Thank you. Any commission comment? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none, let's vote.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Joel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bloom?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item ten, resolution. If Madam Clerk could read the resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, authorizing the city to pay applicable health insurance premiums for elected officials participating in the city health insurance plan, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to, Commissioner Mark? Second. Vice Mayor Bloom. Sorry, I just like the sound of that. Any commissioner have any comment? Seeing none? Anyone from the public have a comment on this? Seeing none? Let's vote.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland? Commissioner Joel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bloom?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
No.
The motion passes.
Okay, moving on. Reports. Any commissioner? Commissioner Marks?
I would just like to report on a wonderful volunteer dinner that was given by the City of Aventura last week. And a special thank you to Kimberly. I know how hard you work. And most importantly, the volunteers, we can't run this city without our wonderful volunteers who selflessly give of their time. So I just want to thank everyone here this evening who is a volunteer. And for anyone who's watching, again, thank you all because we need all of you and you're an amazing group of folks. So I want to thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. That was a very, very nice event. I concur. And I think it was appreciated by our volunteers as we appreciate them. Thank you. Okay. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to move on to public comment. The city attorney actually has to. City Attorney on. Will you review the purpose of this item? The public comment, please?
Okay. Yeah, so this is the portion in the meeting where the public has three minutes to speak on items that haven't already been covered on the agenda. Anything within the jurisdiction, jurisdiction of the city is fair game. This is not a time for the commission to have a dialogue with the speakers. Let them say what they need to say for up to three minutes and then then make, make the next speaker, give the next speaker the floor. And then when the speakers are done, we move on.
Thank you. So three minutes to speak. When you start, please give your name and your address. If you would like to speak, you may come forward at this time.
My name is Sean Moss, three, 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 zero, Northeast, one ninetyth street. Following last Commissioners meeting, Commissioner Stern and I had a very, very nice exchange of emails. And after some coordination, he, he, he met with me and we spoke. And I just want to thank you very much for taking that time. Is, is that, sorry, I know I'm not supposed to point anybody out, but he's a, he's a gentleman and we had a really polite conversation like two neighbors should. You know, we weren't there to convince anybody of anything, just kind of start a, a new kind of conversation about what's going on, perhaps in a naive attempt to build some kind of bridge. I think people, I think there are people who are not, who aren't feeling heard. And I think that's a, that's very hard feeling to deal with. It's very emotional. And, and I'm not here to imply that that was intentional. You know, I think a year ago, sorry, you, you were talking to the community about the, the park and, and Founders Park South. And, and I, I think the intention was there. I don't know if it worked out the way everybody meant to you. But, but I don't think, I do think it was, it was well intentioned. You know, I, I, I think there's a lot of people though, who again, who aren't feeling heard and are feeling like second class citizens and once again, not with intent. And, and while I don't still agree with the project on a philosophical level and I think places like that should, should, should be preserved. And, and I would most likely, I would prefer to have my children raised in, in open green spaces. But I think it's a superficial debate that shouldn't create the tension it should. We can have a disagreement as friends. I, I, I get that this maybe isn't the best form for a conversation, but perhaps we can start a better one. Thank you.
Thank you for your Thank you for your comments and thank you for reaching out to Commissioner Stern. Hi. Name and address, please.
Alicia Bonvicini, Northeast 188th Street, Aventura. So the timing of this meeting is not great. A lot of us have been involved, we've been involved in protecting Founders Park South. I'm really tired today and quite sad. Your actions left a mark. I don't think you fully grasp how many people, adults and children alike, are heartbroken by your decision concerning the park. They also left a mark because some people don't believe anymore that coming up here once a month and voicing their concern is actually effective. It feels more like theater than an actual channel of communication. Some people don't believe anymore. They're reaching out, writing emails. It equates to an actual conversation. I wrote many during the past 12 months and I'm not going to say names because I don't want to do that, but I, not many have replied back to me. And I don't say this because we have decided to pave the green hills of Founders Park South, our beloved beautiful park. I say this because sometimes during this interaction about the park, we didn't feel fully heard. I'm hoping that moving forward, the city will really listen to us actively because there is an upcoming project that has to do with the other park, Founders Park North. And even, even if it has not started yet, it's already creating concerns. I have not one but two friends, those kids attended the recreational soccer at Founders Park North, who will not be signing up their children next year. And they're doing tryouts somewhere else because of the artificial turf. Their rationale is I will not have my kids practice multiple times a week on a material whose effects on kids' health in the long term, we ignore. I might not be as radically inclined as them, but I have my concerns as well. I know this format here does not allow question and answers, but I really want to make sure that when it comes to this issue, we don't do a Founders Park South 2.0. And I hope that when myself or other concerned parents will contact you, you will not just tell them that it's a done deal. One last thing, your actions left a mark because the little ones who have been following their parents or family friends' effort to protect the park seem to have caught a wonderful buck. Your actions definitely sparked their inner environmental sensitivity and for that, I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening and thank you, oh, good evening and thank you for listening to us. We are the founding team of Bridges to Brilliance Incorporated. I am the founder and president, Mina Pisan. Unfortunately, our digital marketing manager, Amelia Kelly, could not be here today. However, beside me is my vice president, Daphne Pisan, my secretary, Luis Eisenbahn, treasurer, Eva Gozi, and public relations coordinator, Sam Walkinsburg. We are hard-working high school students that come from different backgrounds and experiences and have a passion for volunteering. Using our passion and dedication, we aim to make a difference in our community. Therefore, we established this nonprofit organization.
The United States education system is plagued by persuasive disparities that unjustly impact low-income students and students of color. These inequalities, which have been consistently documented through statistical analysis, have led to staggering dropout rates perpetrating a vicious cycle of systematic poverty and stunting educational progress. According to the, to a received report by the National Center for Educational Statistics, low-income students have a dropout rate of 12%, while students of color have a dropout rate of 9%. Moreover, overcrowding schools is another issue that compounds a problem, not enough personalized support and connections made. It's worth noting that the, that the current counselor-to-student ratio in the U.S. is about 1 to 430 public schools because it demonstrates a lack of adequate personalized support system across the country. To ignore the plight of low-income students and students of color is to continue to, to perpetrate systematic inequality.
We are fighting the inequality in the education system by establishing a volunteer and mentoring program that will serve South Florida schools. Right now, we are working with the Jack and Jill Center by providing tutoring in all, tutoring in all subjects as well as life skills, advice and mentoring, which will help create a safe space for students of all ages and backgrounds. Although we are already in touch with several elementary schools at the moment, we hope to expand to other schools in the region for volunteering opportunities, including Aces and Onsofer.
Our nonprofit organization is dedicated to tutoring and mentoring underprivileged students, helping them to achieve their academic potential and succeed in life. However, we face a significant challenge in obtaining the educational resources necessary to provide a high-quality service. With your support, we can ensure that our students have the access to books, technology, and other tools they need to succeed.
We need your help to reach more potential volunteers who can help us achieve our mission. By promoting our volunteering opportunities to middle schools and high schools in Aventura, you can help us where, raise awareness of our organization and the important work that we do. Together, we can empower more students to achieve their full potential and create a brighter future for our community.
With your help, we can make a difference. If you're interested in setting up a meeting, just, or talking to us about what we do, just contact us and as you probably just received, our contact information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing. If you can get in touch with our manager offline and it can try to get you connected to the right people at our schools to see if there's synergy there with the wonderful work that you're doing. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Commissioner Friedland?
I just want to say it's so nice to see all of you. I haven't seen you, some of you since you were a little bit younger and I didn't recognize who all of you were and I heard you. And it's nice to see how grown up you all are and doing so well. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ofelia Duran. I live in 3300 Northeast 191st Street, here, Aventura Park Center. As an immigrant and now a proud U.S. citizen, I was so excited the first time I voted here. My first vote was for you, Commissioner Amit Bloom. I have lived in here since November 2015. At the beginning, I felt lost and sad, of course. But this beautiful city made me feel welcomed because of the parks. I visit frequently Founders Park South. There, I found my healing. Now I am surprised because there is an inconsultate project going. You approve to destroy this beautiful park. And it's not only about the community garden. I know the community garden is going to stay. I feel this park is an special, very special, spacefully place for working families. My only question as Aventura resident about this project is, should not we ask our local resident to decide the future of our Founders Park South? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers? Good evening.
Evening. What do you need? My first time here, sorry.
It's okay. Name and address.
Oh, Devin, okay. 3340 Northeast 190th Street. I'm here regarding the project at Founders Park South. My apologies for not addressing you sooner, but I just discovered about, I just discovered the issue this weekend, unfortunately, by word of mouth. To my knowledge, I didn't receive any notice by mail or see a banner at the park site promoting the project. I wish I had. I'm not for or against pickleball. I'm going to approach this from a different angle. This is about an agreement. And I can relate to the dilemma that this might cause as I've served on, I've served on multiple boards at Aventura Marina. I'm not an attorney, but I do have expertise in highly regulated and litigious industry. So some history here, I just want to give for everyone. There's an agreement that was titled amended declaration of restrictions recorded in Miami Dade and the reference number is 1998R485655. Founders Park was donated to the city by Hidden Bay, Hidden Bay 2, AKA Aventura Marina, and Summit Properties, AKA Camden, along with $700,000 for constructing the area. As one can imagine, the donation came with strings attached and a number of restrictions. It was drafted by Greenberg Torg, a well-known law firm. There are design maps. There's language to protect the neighboring area. There's language for initial construction and language for operations on a continuous basis. The agreement limits additional lighting, noise, and nuisance from the park, or what they call the intensity of use proposed for the park. There's language for park use, daytime only, and limits evening activities to six times a year. One might ask themselves, why is all this in the agreement? What's directly addressing and what's directly addressed and what's the intent? Why would, what would a reasonable person conclude? I think it's reasonable to assume the granters wanted a peaceful surrounding environment for their development. And I don't think it was for the construction workers, but rather all owners to enjoy their, their units on a continuous basis. One could argue legal terms. I'm not going to do that. Who are the current parties to the agreement? Did succession or assignment occur? Prior approval rights? What's considered a change to the park site from the original blueprint? It's there. It's all in here. The blueprint is here. The last clause to me is very clear and it says, I quote, "These restrictions benefits all present" all the present, I'm sorry, "These restrictions benefit all present and future owners of the property and the city, a covenant that runs with the property and their successors entitle until modified or released by the parties." So I think the agreement still lives on in perpetuity unless released. We may have a different view on that.
You're going to have to, I'm sorry, you're gonna.
Just finishing in 15 seconds.
Go ahead.
To my knowledge, the city has not received prior approval or release from any party to this agreement. If it has, please share. I respectfully asked that we hit the pause button to review the documents, designs which support the city plan, and adherence to the restrictions agreement. There should be a due, due process in public record and we should reexamine it to make sure that everything is kosher. I'm happy to meet with the city, discuss it.
Thank you. Thank you.
But why?
Excuse me. Everyone gets three minutes. Everyone gets three minutes. You have to respect the rules, please. I let you go on for an extra minute.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I know that the, the young.
Excuse me. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. I've asked you very politely. Every, no one disrespected the rules until you. I'm sorry, sir.
All right. Well, if any of this.
Just so you know, the issue you've raised has been researched by our attorney. It's been
Howard.
Pined on legally, okay? So you can speak to him if you want, but you had your time and I, I appreciate you respecting the rules. We have a way to do. You said 15 seconds, but you didn't mean it. Next speaker, please.
Many of these people have spoken.
Swang, if you're going to speak, it's time to come up. I think you waited to be last, so I think you're probably last. If there are no more speakers, oh, you are going to speak.
Ah, thank you. It's an honor. You remember my name is. Okay, here.
Name, please.
My name, Su Wang, 3115 Northeast 184th Street, 430 Aventura, Florida, 33160. Thank you. Let me continue this gentleman's speech, if you want me to read. Why invite possible legal battle of the perception of the city versus owners, especially those who donated to the land? We could find ourselves in a real battle, I believe. Sorry. If anything I'm saying is being heard for the first time, any member has not included it, this agreement in decision-making, the best option is to pause. I respectfully ask a member to make that motion today. Thank you. I'm going to read, to me it's a poem. Somebody wrote to me. I posted on Save Founders Park Instagram page. It touched me every time when I read it. I'm getting emotional. Some are commissioners, or whatever that. This is about the fate of Founders Park South. How will future generations remember us? Will our children look back in awe at how we came together to make the right decision to preserve nature and all its creatures, big and small? Or will they be ashamed that we chose to pave the park over protecting its nature? Well, you may think that small parks and green spaces do not matter. Every decision and action we take has a significant impact on the health of the planet and its inhabitants. Actions speak louder than words and it's up to us to prioritize conservation effort. Our planet's future is in our hands. And every effort we make towards conserving nature counts. Let's make sure that we leave a positive legacy for future generations to admire and to continue. And we had kids wrote a note on the tree last night. I hope Mr. Mayor would allow me to read a few notes of kids. This one, "If you were me, how would you feel by chopping me that a sign of the knife?"
Thank you, Ms. Wang.
I read a few more notes of kids.
Excuse me?
Can I read a few more notes kids wrote on the tree?
You used most of your time reading the speech from the gentleman before you. You want to read two more notes? Go ahead.
Yes. "Let me live, let me live. Look, I'm beautiful. Save me, save the earth." One kid wrote, "Love this park, save this park, enjoy this park, see the plants, play here, relax and chill." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. Any other speakers? Seeing, seeing none? A closed public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't know if the commission wants to hear from me, but I, I'd like to comment if I could about the agreement that the speaker referred to. Just sort of explain to the commission, who wasn't on the commission when this first came up, what, what really this is all about.
Please go ahead and thank you.
So the gentleman's correct. There was an agreement that was tied to the donation of land to the city. This was done in 1998. There was a special warranty deed that was in fact recorded and it did identify certain conditions. But here, here's the problem and it is true that those conditions would last to perpetuity. However, there's, there are some principles in law. One's called waiver and the other's called a stoppall. And the city engaged in activities that arguably were in conflict with some of these conditions. There were no objections ever filed. The tract of land that was covered by the covenant included Founders Park South and portions of Founders Park North. And essentially it says that there can only be passive purposes at these locations. And Founders Park North within the tract is a totlot and a splash bed. If there's anything less passive than that, I don't know what it is. There were no objections made at that point in time. There, when the gardens came into existence, there was construction, Founders Park South, you know, to, to create a fence, which clearly was contrary to the, to the, to the deed restrictions, that no construction could be made without the permission of the grantors. If you, if you essentially don't object, you waive your right to object now. There are many opportunities. These are all, all of these matters were done publicly and this notion that the, the city is supposed to go to the associations and ask their permission, that, that's unenforceable. The city does things, you know, in a public process and public meetings and, and those who are involved in the city have a right to object and try to enforce the covenant, but it's too late now. They had their chance. They didn't do it. So any future project in the park, as long as it's consistent with park purposes in general, you know, is within the prerogative of the commission to approve.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for that clarification. Is there any other business, any other issues to be raised? If not, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. Is there any other business, any other issues to be raised? If not, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. I've got Vice Mayor Vice Mayor Bloom. I'm seeking a second. I've got Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?